It is important here today that we have this committee get an assurance from INEC that elections, particularly the presidential election we hold on February twenty fifth of this year, twenty twenty three, because right now, the INEC chairman had to meet with the president years ago and the central bank government to get an assurance that they will have enough money to carry out electoral activities. Nobody should pretend that today this country is facing a currency crisis. And also, I feel that this was self-induced, self-inflicted, which has given rise to speculations in our country that the APC party does not plan to hold elections and they are looking forward to creating and entering government. We need solid assurance that INEC is actually prepared for elections. That is very important. I would also say that we have reached a point where the Senate
Sorry, please. Would like you to limit your observations based on whatever I wanted to find out for INEC, but no APC government.
Well, the government of APC is your government and you are here in majority as senators of that government. You should not ignore the problems you have created in the country. You should take responsibility for it. Don't, don't talk from it. I also want to say regarding this that the electoral act. Can I have more house space? Thank you very much. Chama, do I have your attention?
Yes, please. I am going to protect it.
Also, I also seriously think that the electoral act has some lacunae that has been exploited by the judiciary. We are all aware that even though the portal for electoral processes have been closed, courts are still giving conflicting judgments regarding candidates in these elections, including some candidates that did not even participate in primaries that have been imposed on INEC as we speak. One of them is your president here. An electoral act that also empowers INEC to become a major decision maker for parties is not a democratic electoral act. I also want to say that the Senate should look directly into how to curb INEC power to deregister parties because that does not promote democracy at all. The parties are registered, they are participating in election. Whenever INEC likes, they deregister political parties and this will shut out very serious ideological parties and we are afraid that if they are allowed to do that, some of our parties might become victim of this excellent but dracunian power of INEC. I'll say one last thing which has to do with the capacity of INEC servers to handle pressure from the public. I have tested INEC's live website during those two elections and I can say categorically that that website is not capable of handling public queries in a national election. The ICT department of INEC should be asked to have a solid website that can carry out encrypted message. What I mean is that when you are submitting election results from polling units to the server of INEC, the results cannot be intercepted. But what I see on INEC website is that they don't have strong servers, they don't have the ability to connect to as many queries as are coming to it instantly the way other websites should function. We persons with disability are hopeful that we will have at least, at least seventy percent inclusive electoral process. And how can we do that as an organization? Thanks for the likes of Black and several others. In the next one minute, as I conclude, we are for the first time deploying seven hundred observers across the country. As we speak, our colleagues are in the field training these observers. Number two is our election hall. For the first time in the country, we will be deploying technology to monitor the inclusion of the electoral process. And we have developed an app that will go live tomorrow and everyone can download that app and you'll be able to tell us what is happening at your polling unit. With respect to the need for us as a national assembly to go back to the drawing board and rework the electoral act itself as it is. But in the meantime, I believe we have a law that if it is sincerely implemented by all stakeholders, all parties concerned, should lead us somewhere. But that is not to say that it is yet. Some of the provisions in the law, much as I know we meant well, we meant well to the extent that we even ended up disenfranchising ourselves in an attempt to get things right. I'm not aware any member of the national assembly was able to vote as a delegate in its own, in its own political parties primaries and all that. However, I believe that some of the provisions that the courts have been battling with, the law that we make is what the court says it is. The court interprets the laws. So if in the event we come to a conclusion that interpretations we are getting from the court are not reflective of our legislative intent, then we have to go back to the drawing board. One of such areas is in the area of computation of time. I know it's been a serious matter in different ways. Up till Supreme Court held, for instance, there are the fourteen day period for a candidate who is complaining about the content of Form EC nine submitted by another candidate or another aspirant who would have been major candidates, who begin from the day that Form EC nine is submitted to INEC. In that provision, it is, there are subsections. We also talked about the need for INEC to do publication within a certain number of days after Form EC nine would have been submitted. Courts are saying from, I mean, fourteen days start from the day that Form EC nine is submitted. That would not have been our intention. There is no way an aspirant or a candidate of another party will know when a candidate has submitted his Form EC nine to INEC. Not to talk of the contents, because the candidate is not going to break into INEC record until INEC does its publication. That's the only time that other candidate will have access to the contents of Form EC nine submitted by any other candidate. But the courts are saying, no, the computation of fourteen days from the day that you submitted your Form EC nine. So I just cited as an example to show that we still have work to do, given the kind of judicial interpretation we are getting. I'm sure my colleagues, you know, are tuned with this and will do the needful in that regard. But the other aspect of my comments briefly has to do with the question on the lip of many, many Nigerians today, which some of our presidential candidates here have also asked this morning, will these elections hold on schedule? I believe that beyond the assurances of INEC, this is a question that will have to be answered in their affirmative by all the stakeholders who are involved. The major threat that I see to election holding today, it's not about whether or not INEC is ready, it's obvious INEC is ready for this election. The CBN, more than any other stakeholder, is a threat to the dis-election holding or schedule. If three weeks to election, we are sitting facing a situation where Nigerians are stripping in the banking hub, stripping naked in the banking hub because they cannot have access to the little money that they have. If we were told at the beginning of this policy implementation that the target were the so-called, I mean, moneybags who had naira stashed, you know, I mean, in their closets and that was what, those were the people they wanted to get at. Today is the ordinary man on the street who is suffering from this and we must understand the political economy of an electoral process. If people, and again, that's part of the problem with the law that we even made, we shied away because we didn't want people to think we were voting too much money, you know, to be spent by political parties and candidates. We put some fortunes, I mean, sums of money that cannot even do the job because all you need to do today is calculate the number of polling units that political parties will have to pay, just a candidate who have to pay their own agents, calculate them all over the country and compare that to how much money we provided for in the law. We'll come back to that. However, if today CBN is assuring Nigerians, oh, if INEC has needs more money, or if INEC pays money, we will make sure INEC has money. So what happens if we are under the line on selective intervention of CBN for INEC to be able to perform? And if the police run into logistics problem, so they have to go to CBN for selective intervention. We are fighting Boko Haram. If there are issues and they are not able to buy what they are supposed to buy to prosecute this war, they run to CBN to do selective intervention. These are issues and as far as I am concerned as a stakeholder, the CBN is the major, is the most outstanding threat to this election's holding as scheduled. And two stakeholders stand out there, the INEC to stand on his feet and do his best and the judiciary. Because when the political class has come to hold the nation to ransom, as it appears now, it is the judiciary that will have to stand up and save the nation from the juggler of the political class. There is definitely a cabal that does not want this election to hold. But let us remind them, those who called themselves a cabal under President Obasanjo became irrelevant after that. Those who considered themselves a cabal under President Yaradua became irrelevant after that. Those who considered themselves into a cabal under President Jonathan became irrelevant after that and these two shall pass. The nation is at a crossroad and all stakeholders must stand up in defense of our democracy.
Some information going around at the state offices where your ICT unit seem to be saying or sending some documents across that in some of the polling units, specified number of voters, maybe four or five or nine, as the case may be, as eligible voters who are going to vote on that day of election. You will need to find out whether this is true or not because it's a recipe to crisis on an election day, assuming it happens. That's one. The other one may be about your staff. I may not know if you're the correct audience, but I just feel that you should take it as a take home. Yes, you are doing a lot of training programs preparatory to the general elections. Are you meeting up with the welfare of your staffs going for these training programs? Because you expect your staff to go having transport money to go to the destination of training, having money to pay for the hotel bills and feeding, and then required allowances be paid to them. Otherwise, you will hear rumblings and grumblings. Thank you very much. Chama?
Okay, let me take. If INEC have not done their job due diligence, I won't be sitting down with you as a candidate of APC and it's through transparency and the law that backed the activities INEC embarked. The only question I've asked, one, I've been hearing different angle that a lot of Nigerians have two voter cards, some have three. Is it possible for an individual to use two, three voter card on election day? That is one. Two, how come one person have more than a voter card? Secondly, the database of INEC, how is it being managed? Because I learned some people come to me and they will tell me, please help us to talk to INEC to get us the strength of every polling unit. I said as a chairman, I've never asked and I will never ask. And my worry is that many people who come to us and tell us, we know the number of voters in so-so-so-so area whereby I think by now, I don't think INEC have published that on the website. I want to know, how are you able to control all these irregularities and how are you managing all this information for us to get the best out of it at the end of the day?
There is nothing like perfect election anywhere in the world. It's very, very important for you to understand that and that even the most developed democracies have their own problems. When the national assembly got involved in amending the electoral acts, it was because of the complaints and then observations of our previous elections where we saw flaws and thought it is necessary to make sure that those flaws are corrected. The main aim is to move a country to a situation where we will have what is called free, fair and credible election. Even though these three concepts have always been misused and people don't even understand, but they are distinct and distinguishable. A free election is the one that allows a citizen of a country to exercise his right to vote without any hindrance. A fair one is the electoral body's responsibility to provide an enabling environment for all participants in the election to participate fairly and the government of the day to make sure that there are no inhibitions imposed on any candidate, either by way of restricting his movement or making sure he does not have venue to campaign or such other drawbacks that will work against him. A credible one is the totality of the process being watched by ordinary Nigerians on the streets to say that, yes, the candidate that emerged, actually emerged through what we call majority of those votes. These are the three concepts. In this situation, civil society, citizens of the country, the independent national electoral commission, the judiciary, all have roles to play. When we started our democracy in nineteen seventy-nine, my learned friend, I'm sure if you remember the case of Ajaship versus Omoboro. I think it's nineteen eighty Supreme Court report, I'm not so sure. If my memory has not failed me, page eight nine, Justice Weiss specifically captured the role of judiciary in making sure that the electoral process is achieved towards these three goals. And he made it very clear that in the determination of electoral matters, substantial justice should be prepared and that human inadequacies which encompasses a lawyer can in the same vein declare, sorry, human inadequacies which encompasses a legislator can in the same vein declare the tort of a lawyer. And that since substantial justice is to be prepared, human inadequacies must never be taken into account and that technicalities of whatever description should not be allowed to inhibit because of that justice. The whole idea is that we are a multi-religious, multi-ethnic and our diversity in short dictates that we have a democracy that can guarantee peaceful coexistence in the country. So for us to go with an impression that we will have what is called a perfect election, I think that is wrong. What we require INEC to do is to do what we refer to as substantial compliance. I'm sure my learned friend will know what that expression means, substantial compliance. And once there is evidence of substantial compliance, the election is deemed to have been held fairly. So let Nigerians not begin to think that we have reached a state where, or we will reach a state where we will have a perfect election. Even the most developed democracies do not have that. But citizens have responsibility and more especially, participants in our electoral process must exhibit some level of responsibility to assist INEC to achieve that. And I think this is where Mr. Chairman, a Nigerian should anchor their thoughts on whatever we are doing here. Anything that we have discussed here that we believe rightly that it needs our attention as a parliament, I'm sure it will be attended to, not necessarily by us, but by those coming after us. Because ours is to put the records so that when they come, they will see what we have done. So please, Nigerians, participants in our political process, government of the day, government of the day, and that's why the comment of my learned friend, Opayemi, is very, very important. Don't ever give the impression that you are sabotaging one process or the other by your action or inaction, because that is going to affect the integrity of the election itself. And it's only a free, fair and credible election that can guarantee peace in a multi-ethnic and multi-religious country like ours.
I want to say here that when the nomination portal was, before it was opened, INEC invited each political party to send two officials for training. We trained them, I actually was overseeing that process. We trained each and every one of them for, I think, two days or three days. So all the political parties knew what to expect. Oh, four days, for four days we were training them on how to use the portal, how to upload what is typical Nigerian style. They do not put, I mean, sending their nominations on time. It got to a stage where INEC was having to call the political parties, please, you have not sent your nomination, send them in. So I want to say that I believe that INEC has been particularly very professional when it comes to using this technology. And if you have, if at the end of the process, if you have not sent any, your, some of your nominations did not come through, it's because you didn't send them on time. There was a political party that actually two days before the end were calling them, you still have not sent. And you can imagine, they are sending names of candidates from all over the country and you are still waiting to the last thing. Another political party sat those that we had trained and voting people who they didn't train. So these are the things that we have to go through in that, in that respect. And then the issue of not later than ninety days and one eighty days. When you look at INEC and this huge country that we, we work for, you find that we have to prepare ballot papers, result sheets, train staff, so many things we have to do before to get ourselves ready for the selection. And I'm particularly thankful for the electoral act. It has allowed INEC actually to, to not only print ballot papers and the result sheets, we have trained our staff, brought materials, sent them to the, to each and every local government in this country. Actually, if we have to have an election next week, we will be ready for that election because we have put everything in place and this time gives us, gives us enough time to get everything in place. If we have to wait ninety days before the election, we're going to be where we are, what has happened in the past, where we're not ready. So this time around, I want to really appreciate the national assembly for giving us up to ninety days. That means we can start a year or, or a little bit, maybe nine, ten months. But I, I mean, three months before an election, I don't think it's the wisest thing to do. And then with regards to the beavers, the mock accreditation, we did that so that people can come in and see how the beavers works. Actually, I have an ICT gentleman here, one of our specialists, who is going to demonstrate how the beavers works and later on when we will get to that stage. But he talked about the issue of it that was a little bit slow and, but I was in river state for this accreditation and I went to quite a few polling units. And the truth of matter is that the beaver is particularly very, very fast. And even when you hold on to the beavers, even when the voter brings their card, all we need to do is we look at the register, there is a barcode there, scan it in less than a minute. The details pop up with the photographs or their, it worked, it worked very, very well. And my colleagues who are all from the states and country can say that it did work very well. And I'm hoping that come election day, you'll see that this is one of the best innovations that INEC has had. We also have also expanded polling units. So we don't have voting points again. So where we have polling units in the past that had over, over a thousand, it has been reduced so that you can have more people, reduce the queues when it comes to voting. And then with the issue of deregistration, actually, when we look at it, in the past, in nineteen, in twenty nineteen, we had eighty-nine political parties. Does it make sense to have that much amount of political parties? I think that if you're a political party, you must work hard to get as much seats in the national assembly or in the state house or assembly so that we'll know that you are a real genuine political party. And then the issue of our website, you must understand that IRF that is uploaded on election day is different from our website. The IRF is just for the election results. It is scanned as polling unit and it is sent off to the portal for every single one of us in this room to, to view. So you don't, you don't, we don't input any results there. But the website is totally different. So I want to believe there's a mistake here in saying that our website, you cannot send messages. The website is different. You can send message through the website, but not through the IRF. And Yes, I was asked, can the beavers be compromised? And the beavers cannot be, cannot be compromised because what we have, we have ethical hackers who we use periodically to check, check the beavers. And I'm confident that we will not have issues regarding the beavers being compromised. And then a number of voters, four or five, as eligible voters will find out. And I think that you want, you must understand in this type of election, there are lots of fake news and the fake news are done deliberately to disenfranchise Nigerians. We don't want voter apathy. INEC is putting all its effort into this election so that people will come out and mass vote. So if you hear anything, let us know and we will respond to you. I get a lot of messages from people's website, I mean, WhatsApp, from WhatsApps. They send them to me and I'm sure a lot of my colleagues will respond. And INEC has our vet where they are to give, tell you what the correct story is. And sometimes ICT, they go in and check out those fake news and pull them out. The intention for this fake news is to prevent you and I and others from voting. And then And the register of vote, I have to say that the register of voters has been released to political parties. So every political party has the register of voter. So you can know all the registered voters in your local government is all there for everyone to see. So there's nothing that's strange about people coming to tell you, I can tell you how many people are going to vote in your, in your local government or what particular polling station. And then the issue of, oh, paying INEC staff and all that, I want to tell you that this commission has always paid DTA. They pay our staff every penny that they are required. So if anyone tells you that they have not been paid, that person is lying because we can bring out documentations to show how much our staff are paid for every activity. But you know, we were Nigerians and we know what happens in this country. You know, election time is business. So everybody is telling lies and doing everything just to put down the commission. But I can tell you with great confidence that Professor Mahmoud led commission has paid, we pay all our staff, they have never, ever not been paid for any activity that they are going for. And then the distribution of PVCs, yet again, it is a Nigerian problem. We have one month, one year to collect your PVCs. People don't come. Our staff are paid DTA to go and sit down morning to night. Nobody turns up. Few weeks before the election, they start this drama and it's sad because we are And it's sad because we're paying staff to sit down doing nothing. The PVCs have been there, waiting for people and they don't turn up. So that's the problem. And we, we find that we must change our attitude to, to the way we do things. As the commission becomes more professional, we expect the voters and those who will come through to act in the manner in which they're used to and in which we expect them to. If we say this is the timetable, you've got to follow the timetable. Otherwise, we're not going to compromise. Because if we continue to move the, the timetables each time, we will never have an election in this country. And we must appreciate that this country should move to greater heights and start with the elections. And we have here what we need to differently with regards to electoral offenses. Yes, electoral offenses is a problem. But we were hoping that the National Assembly will, uh, have, we've attended a few presentations here with regards to the Electoral offenses commission. Unfortunately, it hasn't worked as it had planned. But INEC, we continue to train our staff, we have been engaging with the security agencies. You don't forget that INEC does not investigate, we only prosecute. So we rely on the police, so there's, we have a better relationship with the police. And I believe that we'll do better with regards to getting the investigation reports quickly. And then, because we are ready to go, but we need to get here from there. And then with regards to, um, uh, over voting, yes, with, yes, sir. The issue of over voting is quite interesting. But you see, at the moment, um, like in the case of Oshun that we've just come from, the matter is already in court. So it's really, really subdued and I would not be able to comment on, on, on that particular matter regarding over voting. But I want you to, you listen to the gentleman from the ICT and you will see how beavers works, how the data is, is put together. And then now, we also have, the Electoral Act has allowed us the accreditation. You know, before it was all those who are registered in that polling unit, now it's only those.
From the presentations by organizations and individuals and then the presentation by INEC, we, we need to commend you for what you have been doing. And generally as a committee, we believe that you've been following the Electoral Act properly. The other issue which we have not discussed on really is the issue of Electoral offenses commission, which that one we have appealed now, we have been passed by the Senate. I will be certain to get response from the House Representative. And I believe that bill will be passed as soon as we can. And we hope, even if it may not be used by this election, I believe we will pass it immediately after we resume before the new Senate comes in.
Every registered voter in each polling unit will be downloaded onto the machine. For example, this machine has been configured to this polling unit. And the unit is thirty-seven zero one zero one zero zero one. This, for example, is a polling unit in the FCT. And in this polling unit, the total number of registered voters will be downloaded onto this machine. For example, on this machine that I'm holding, we have eighteen. It therefore means that the number of registered voters on the app copy, that is the register that will be deployed to that polling unit, was being tended with the number on the beavers. You have eighteen registered voters on the beavers. The number of voters on the app copy, registered voter must also be eighteen. Now for this machine to be used, a voter must come with his or a permanent voter's card. Because news have been flying around that you can come with the last five digits of your PIN and you will be allowed to vote. I want to say here with emphasis that it is no PVC, no voting. You don't have PVC, you will not be allowed to vote. You must present your PVC for you to be allowed to stay on the queue. And when you get to the operator using this machine, using this beaver, it calls up your information from within the beaver, just like what the rep of General Mr. Chairman said earlier, by using the barcode at the back of the PVC or the QR code on the register or type in your last name or the last six digits of your PIN as a voter.
Students, we know what was the plight of students. They registered at home and then now they are in school. And all they are asking, you know, it's an opportunity to participate. And I think that what this hallowed chamber should do is to recognize that these people do have rights. They are crying and screaming that they want to participate. And just the recognition that they have the right to do so is what they seek and they demand. But to say that there was opportunity for them and all that, I don't think it is fair on the part of the students. And this is just the objection that I want to put before, before you. Because I think it's unfair to students. If there are three million or so, those three million people are Nigerians. They also have a right, the same way we all also have a right. Has INEC provided the opportunity? Yes, INEC provided the opportunity. But because of their circumstances and one of the prayers in the motion that the House moved is that there are schools who set examinations on the week of elections. Can we urge those schools, please, for the, for the purpose of the elections? Can you suspend the, the examination so that these students can go and do what and cast their vote? Mr. Chairman, I rest my case.
You're so exciting. I am the chairman in the party of Asri Kansu. I also chair a party, actually, I think, a party, okay? And I'm also a candidate, presidential candidate in this election. The Electoral Act twenty twenty-two is a watershed in the march towards having credible, fair and decent election in Nigeria. The experience that we have gathered so far goes to confirm the fact that one, INEC is highly committed. And I think they should commend, they should commend it for that fierce commitment to implementation of this piece of legislation, which like I said, is going to put this country on a very strong, high pedestal in terms of advancement of democracy in Nigeria. The act, like the whole rule, is having its maiden outing as far as the conduct of elections in this country's foresight. And definitely, there will be some teasing problems when you embark on implementation of such an important legal framework. And as political parties come to realize that there are certain areas of, shall I say, lack of clarity, especially as it affects the role of INEC. Uh, here, I'm trying to talk about INEC country as against the provisions of the Electoral Act itself. The Electoral Act was very magnanimous, robust. And perhaps, might I take into consideration the fact that this is a social process, it involves humans, where these cases are likely to come. I therefore gave an ample period of space for carrying out some of the most critical, important activities in the act, such as the uploading of the candidates to the portal of INEC. The portal itself is of course an innovation that we all welcome. But like every other man-made machine, computers, definitely, there's chances of failure. And when it fails, it impacts on the time. And we were faced with a situation where INEC was of course for good reasons, adammant on their, which we appreciate. But forgetting the fact that there's a need to allow those teasing problems to be addressed without inadvertently disenfranchising and not allowing some Nigerians to criticize the inaliable rights of participating in elections. I'm sure most of us are aware, today as we stand here, we have over six hundred cases emanating from the implementation of this infrastructure. Shouldn't be so. It depends on the implementation of the act. And as we speak, some of the cases have gone all the way to the Supreme Court. Because there are cases where the parties will get court judgment and INEC will go and then challenge the court judgment. And if you go to the court of appeal, INEC will be there again. And because you cannot compare the needs of government in some cases to resources I may do there to political parties or individuals, who would have expected that like INEC is doing with the beavers, testing them in a kind of, understanding fully how much time it takes and what are the areas of failure so that it would be accommodated when you now come to the main activities of the implementation of the act. There are areas where the act says.
Sorry, I actually take note because I expect to respond from his questions. But I also like to add to the presidential candidate that you are not giving us lecture yet. Just go to the questions, please, and so.
My questions are, for instance, where are the acts that is not under the ninety days? Or why hundred eighty days? INEC principle is saying that you do not have the ninety days available to do as meaning you have a political party. We believe that's an abreach of the rights of these political parties. Would the loaders not attend? And that's why you see so many cases in the court, people trying to earn their right or to, to take to, to ensure that their right is not given. Number two, the very exercise that INEC, where INEC tested the beavers, an average certification took about two minutes or five minutes. And if you calculate that you have an election from eight to six and if one person will spend two minutes in a polling unit where you have, some of them we have seven hundred candidates and you have minimum, I think it's five hundred or something like that. Then you calculate two minutes, so which means in an hour, you may just be able to get maybe thirty. Maybe you just accumulate it. So these are the things INEC deconsider further the nation of the polling unit or perhaps come with some other innovation in order to ensure that nobody is disenfranchised or we are void of whatever care of that thing come up in the election. So there are so many others, but like I said, it's just a question because this is effective representation. And I think the senators here and House of Representatives who commend your efforts on bringing the appeal itself into the bank, should take a second look at it. And INEC to, you know, act as promoters of democracy, meaning the open space for people to participate in the election. Thank you very much for giving your time.